is also available on our city website. Tonight, I would be asking council to approve my signing of three proclamations related to services provided by the City of Torrington and in honor and support of the dedicated, skilled, hard-working city employees who provide these services. I, as mayor, along with the city council, are charged by law with protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Torrington and all who visit here. The city has approximately 100 employees, many more during the summer season. The different departments include administration, airport, ambulance, cemetery, city shop, electric, emergency management, engineering, fire department, golf, internet technology, buildings and grounds, maintenance, metering, museum, parks and sports fields, police department, purchasing, safety, streets and sanitation, swimming pool, and water and sewer departments. The city is a big machine with a lot of moving parts that all have to work together for the benefit of the health, safety, and welfare of all of us. I like to say that the city provides many of the services necessary to allow us to live a civilized life. Tonight, I want to single out and mention Darren Yates, Executive Director of the City Emergency Medical Services, and his dedicated staff. They are our ambulance corps. Later tonight, I will be proclaiming Emergency Medical Services Week. I also want to single out and mention Tom Troxel, City Water Operations Supervisor, and Chris Powell, Water/Wastewater Department Foreman, and their dedicated and skilled staff, as tonight I will also be proclaiming Drinking Water Week in the City of Torrington. Not everyone on this planet, or even in this country, has easy access to clean, safe drinking water. We are so blessed in this regard, and many of us take this blessing for granted. Finally, I want to single out and mention all our department heads, supervisors, foremen, and employees, as they are all public works professionals who are skilled, dedicated, and work hard to provide us all with clean water, sewer, streets, trash pickup, electric, parks, and recreation. Again, all the services that are necessary to live a civilized life. Tonight, I will also be proclaiming National Public Works Week, which covers all our city employees. Many thanks to all of them. As always, please slow down, please drive carefully, please watch out for pedestrians, bicycles, motorcycles, and scooters, and please do not text while driving. With sadness, I do announce the passing of former county commissioner John Ellis, who has passed away last Friday. Our prayers go out to his loved ones. His service will be held on Wednesday, May 14th, at 1:00 p.m. at Christ Reformed Presbyterian Church here in town. Again, his service, John Ellis's, will be held on Wednesday, May 14th, at 1:00 p.m. at Christ Reformed Presbyterian Church. Thank you. First, next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the April 15th, 25 council meeting is published.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the consent agenda as set forth in the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda as set forth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the consent agenda is approved. Next item is approval of the agenda itself, and, gentlemen, we did have a handout which indicates the language that should be in item number eight, and I would entertain a motion for an amended agenda with item eight being amended as indicated in that handout email.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend the agenda and subsequently approve with the corrected staff recommendation as delivered to us via email.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. So I have a motion to amend the agenda, item eight, to be the, to read instead of what's there, what's in the email handout. Second.
Was there a second? I believe it was Councilman Kelly.
Councilman Kelly seconded that. So I have a motion and a second. So, and, and the motion includes approving the amended agenda. So.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes, Councilman Victor.
Just, just for the audience in the, in the attendance here tonight and probably listening online or on the radio, that amendment would change the staff's recommendation to include $13,717 for material testing costs, along with the other incurred costs outlined in the original agenda.
Okay. Thank you for that informational statement. Appreciate it, Councilman Victor. So I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda, item number eight, and then approve the amended agenda. Do, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the amendment of item eight and then improvement, approval of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the amended is, the.
Amended agenda.
The amended agenda is approved. Thank you, Councilman Victor. All right. Moving on, we are now in public forum section. I don't see any takers this evening, but I do like to explain this to those on the radio and those in the audience here. This is for, as we call it, the public forum. This is for non-agenda items. There is a time limit of two minutes, and the speaker must sign up before the meeting. This is a time for the council to listen. No action will be taken. So, we are down into the action items. The first action item tonight is appointments. Official voting delegate and alternate for the 2025 Wyoming Association of Municipalities, referred to as WAM, Summer Convention Business Meeting to be held on June 12th, 25, in Cheyenne, Wyoming. And as the item number one states, I would ask for council's approver, approval to approve myself, Herb Dobie, as mayor, as the official voting delegate, and to approve Councilman Wayne Deal as the alternate voting delegate.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the appointments as presented.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Victor, item number one, to approve the appointments as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think Councilman Warren got you. Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
At the business meeting, you'll, you will be, it's outlined there that you will be of other things, voting on the association's president, resolutions and membership dues. And I'm just curious, on those resolutions, do they plan to have those compiled before the convention for member, member cities to look over?
Usually do.
I would agree with Mrs. Strecker in my past experience, which is much more limited than Mrs. Strecker's. That comes in before the convention, and so certainly council would, can be made aware of what those resolutions may be. The process that we've used since I've been going to the WAM summer meetings is at the business meeting, I think every time I've been there, I've been the voting delegate, but I certainly have my staff near me to discuss the items and whatever councilman are present. So it's sort of a discussion, and then what we decide what to do, and then when the vote comes, one of us stands up, usually me. So that's how that works. But we can sure, if we have that information, we can sure let you guys know.
That'd be great.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the appointments in item number one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the appointments in item number one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those appointments in item one are approved. Next item on the agenda is item number two, mayor's appointments, requesting council to approve these appointments. They are A through D, so A, B, C, and D. I want to congratulate Bobby Dawkins. She is our new deputy treasurer. She will replace Chris Nickel, who resigned, and we do have a new deputy treasurer, Bobby Dawkins. And these merely put Bobby into those committees as Chris was. It just replaces those committees Bobby on those rather than Chris. And I stand for any questions, if you gentlemen have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the appointment of Bobby Dawkins to the four listed positions.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Deal in item number two, to approve Bobby Dawkins for the four listed committees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Item number two, all those in favor of the mayor's appointments as set forth in item two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those mayor's appointments are approved. Next item on the agenda, we're on the second page now, item number three, special events permits. LeAnn Mattis with Go-Goshen is requesting special event permits for a series of summer concert events to be held on May 28th, 25, June 11th, 25, June 25, 25, and July 9, 2025, each of them from 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and each at the intersection of East A and 21st Avenue. And I appreciate you being here tonight, Chief, so I will call on you first.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the annual iteration of the summer concert series. We've put a lot of time into continual improvement on this event and making it something that has minimal impact but provides a great entertainment option for our community. Go-Goshen submitted the special events permit, and we worked through a very similar event to last year. The long and the short of it is that we'll use the same location, we'll have a staged road closure to minimize impact on business. It does take, take a fair bit of time to get that stage set up, so that actual intersection there will be closed at 3:00 p.m., but it will still provide parking and access to businesses that are on A and 21st. And then at 5:30, the event will start. We're using a closed liquor perimeter as we have in the past, and have some expectations for man in the gates there, not anticipating any problems, and we can expect that this will follow with catering permits in the weeks to come. I did my best to break out costs and recommendations on the last page of the addendum. Be happy to stand for any questions on that, but essentially what staff recommendation was that any cost that would be over and above the on-duty expense for City of Torrington staff would be reimbursed by Go-Goshen, and they have not requested a waiver of the special events fee, so the special event fee for all four events would be $800. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, Chief, I, I looked at the, which I always look at, the notification of event sheet. It looks like all the relevant businesses in that area where this event will take place have been notified.
That's my belief as well.
What did you say the special event fee would be?
It's $200 per event, so the total would be $800.
Good. And my understanding, Ms. Anaya, that's been paid?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Just the $40 application.
Okay, the $40 application fee. It will be paid. All right. Any other questions for Chief Johnson?
I have one. This is the, I don't remember when that started at that intersection. This will be the, at least the third year, if not the fourth year.
I think this is our second year at this location. We, this is our fourth year? I'm sorry, the years are running together a little bit on me, which they shouldn't. This is our fourth year of doing the event. Each year, we've tried to move it a little bit and change it to minimize impact. This is the second year at this location, and we've really offered very minimal changes. It was quite a successful event. I have not had the chance to chat with LeAnn, but I believe they met with the commissioners this morning to utilize the courthouse lawn, and that really was very well received. Folks really enjoyed that, having the grass there, and then that separate space for the liquor venue. So it's, it was a great solution for last year.
All right. Gentlemen, any further questions for Chief Johnson?
Just, Mr. Mayor, that I don't see it on the notification list. I thought there were a few businesses there on 21st and close to East B. That would be that, I think there's a CPA there, a dental office.
It's B.
Just south of the jail.
Where you asked.
Have they been notified?
Most streets aren't closed.
21st, 21st to East B?
Yeah, so that, that would not be impacted in terms of a closure until after business
hours.
Okay.
But there will still be access to the businesses all the way up to East A. We'll have a barricade there at B and 21st to denote that it's no longer a through street, but access will be open for the businesses and full parking will still be available. And we're going to post signage on that this year.
Okay.
I thought of one other thing that we had feedback on from last year, and forgive me for not mentioning it earlier. We did get some feedback about generator noise. Interestingly, we didn't get any feedback about the concert noise, but the generator noise was a little much, and Ms. LeAnn's working with the food trucks to make sure we don't have anything that's too aggressive this year.
And those were generators connected to the food trucks, right?
Yep, yep.
All right. If, if, gentlemen, if you don't have any further questions for the chief at this time, I would invite LeAnn Mattis to come up. Go-Goshen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to come up and speak, and my apologies, yeah, that we really tried to visit with those folks that might be impacted by any closures prior to businesses, business hours, so that's where I was with that, so. But yeah, we are just really excited about bringing this exciting community event once again this year. This is, as we mentioned, the fourth year. This location has proven to be a huge success. I think just with the shade of trees and grassy area just kind of cools things down a little bit, so last year was really great. We had a lot of fun, so. If you have any questions for me, I'd entertain that.
A couple come to mind, Ms. Mattis.
Sure.
So if there's a rain out, are you going to try to reschedule it later in the summer?
We do try to. It doesn't always work out that way. So how we schedule our concerts, we actually fall into, in conjunction with some events that are held in Scotts Bluff and Alliance, so those same concerts that are held in those communities come to our community as well, so, for three days in a row. So if we can make it work out, we, we try.
But sort of a circuit, right?
Yes, yeah, exactly.
So it's the same vendor that you've used in the past, then?
Yes, correct. Mm-hmm. We, we go, we, Richard Castro with Crossroads Music in Scotts Bluff is who we have always contracted with for these events, so.
And have you got the bands lined up this year?
We do. We have for the first event on May 28th is our '80s night. Everybody loves '80s night. Loaded Dice is the band. We have, the second week is a Queen cover band, and that's actually being held in conjunction. It'll be the same week as the Fireman's Convention that's coming to town, so we're expecting kind of an influx in, in folks that evening, so looking forward to that. And then we have a country band as our third act. The name is Corey Waller, and the, forget the name.
The Wicked Things.
The Wicked Things, thank you. I knew it was something odd. And Josh Hoyer is our last band. It's like a jazz funk sound, so, yeah, just, we like to get a, you know, a variety of sounds for, for each night, so.
And one, I have another question, then.
Yeah.
Anybody else can ask a question.
Sure.
I recall last year, it was finally worked out where the stage for the band is sort of catty-cornered there, and so that the, their speakers are aimed sort of northeast toward the courthouse lot.
Correct.
Right? Which I think, by experience, eliminate or mitigate sound coming from the rear, right?
That's, I think that's what we've kind of determined. We haven't had any complaints about the music, so, as far as last year.
And then I'm more.
So I think that did help. I think that played a big part in that, so. And one other thing I would like to mention is that this is the main fundraiser for our Torrington Main Street program. So any dollars that we raise above and beyond what we spend on the concert goes towards our revitalization efforts on our Main Street. We have an Adopt a Planter project coming up, so look, look out for revitalized planters on Main Street. We're excited about that. In any, we offer, of course, business support and the preservation of our Main Street, so. We, we just truly appreciate you entertaining this and, and hope you all come out to listen to some bands with us.
You mentioned fundraiser. Are you doing things to, to actually be a fundraiser?
Yeah, so coming up, we have our Adopt a Planter project. It's new. We're just rolling it out in the next few weeks. Our hope is to, if you'll notice, some of the, the planters and dentists could probably tell you a little bit more on the background of this, but some of those planters are really well-cared for, but some just haven't received the care that they deserve, so we're really hoping to get every single planter on Main Street taken care of and throughout the year, not just spring and summer. So we're, we're wanting folks to put an effort into like fall decorations and Christmas as well. So what we are, what the Main Street program is doing is we're going to offer $100 in Goshen bucks for whoever adopts the planter to make their initial purchase essentially for, for planting and revitalizing those, so.
Those have needed some help for quite a long time.
Yeah, we're excited to, to get it going, so, yeah.
All right. Gentlemen, any further questions for Ms. Mattis? Thank you, LeAnn.
Thank you, yes.
Any further questions for Chief Johnson? All right, seeing none. We are on item number three, special events permits for the Go-Goshen, special events permits for the summer concert series. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would move to approve the event permit with the stipulated fees agreed to by staff and the event sponsor.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Victor to approve the special events permits with the stipulated fees as indicated and approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. All right. All those in favor? Well, any further discussion?
Just thank you for correcting me that it's multiple, multiple permits, so.
Okay. All right. All right. With that, no further discussion, I will call for a vote. Item number three, all those in favor of approving the special events permits in item three and approve the fees as they were presented this evening, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that special, those special events permits are approved with the fees as set forth in the agenda attachment. All right. Next, we're moving on to item number four, which is proclamation proclaiming May 4 through 10, 2025, as Drinking Water Week. And I will read the proclamation that I will be asking council to approve my signing. Says, "City of Torrington, Drinking Water Week, May 4 through 10, 2025. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life of our citizens to enjoy, and whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and quality of life we enjoy, and whereas the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps, and whereas the coronavirus pandemic has shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs, and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend, and whereas the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now therefore, be it resolved that by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Torrington, I do hereby proclaim May 4 through 10, 2025, as Drinking Water Week. Signed, Herb Dobie, Mayor, attest, Lynette Strecker, Clerk, Treasurer." So that is the proclamation, gentlemen, and I know I have Chris Powell, who's back there. He's foreman for Water and Wastewater. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Powell?
No, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, you're welcome, sir. All right. Gentlemen, item number four, I would entertain a motion for me to approve and sign the proclamation Drinking Water Week.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve the signing of this proclamation by the mayor.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Deal to approve my signing the proclamation for Drinking Water Week. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. Item number four, all those in favor of my approving and signing the proclamation for Drinking Water Week as set forth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that proclamation is approved, and I will indeed sign it. Next item on the agenda is another proclamation proclaiming May 18 to 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week. And I will go ahead and read that proclamation. City of Torrington, National Public Works Week proclamation, May 18 through 24, 2025. People, purpose, presence. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public, public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens, and where, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Torrington, Wyoming, to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2025 marks, marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Herb Dobie, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby designate the week, May 18 through 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week." that I, Herb Dobie, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby designate the week, May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representative, representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and signature as mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming. This sixth day of May, 2025, Herb Dobie, Mayor, attest Lynette Strecker, Clerk, Treasurer. So gentlemen, there is the proclamation. Um, again, uh, do you have any questions for me? Tom Troxel was ill today, so he's not here tonight. He is our water supervisor. All right, if there are no questions for me, um, I would offer Chris the chance to come up here if he so chooses. Okay, all right. Um, I would entertain a motion then on item number five, the proclamation, uh, of National Public Works Week.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the proclamation as presented and authorize your signature.
All right, item number five, I have a motion from Council Victorin, Councilman Victorin to approve the proclamation, proclamation as presented and approve my signing it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, item number five of approving the proclamation and my signing it of National Public Works Week, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that proclamation is approved, and I will indeed sign it. Next item on the agenda is the third proclamation, proclamation this evening, item number six, uh, proclaiming May 18th through 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week. And I know, uh, Darren Yates, the EMS executive director, was planning to be here this evening, but he did tell me he might be delayed by a meeting too. I don't see him out there. Um, I will go ahead and read that proclamation. Uh, City of Torrington EMS proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services EMS provide a vital public health service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day and seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency medical care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas EMS has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing medical education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas Wyoming citizens and visitors benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services EMS providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Herb Dobie, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Services Week. Signed Herb Dobie, Mayor, attest Lynette Strecker, Clerk, Treasurer. All right, since the EMS director's not here, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation in item six and my signing it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the proclamation and authorize your signing of that said proclamation.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal, item number six, approving the proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week and authorize my signing it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, item number six, I'll call for vote. All those in favor of, of approving the proclamation of Emergency Medical Services Week and authorizing my signing it, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that proclamation is approved, and I will indeed sign it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a point, uh, that we are very fortunate here in Torrington to have a fully-staffed emergency medical services. Uh, there are counties and places that are, are deserts for emergency medical service, and it's, uh, it's wonderful that we do have that here in Torrington.
I second that, and would just note that they do serve the residents and visitors of the city of Torrington, and they also go out in the county. So, um, they do yeoman's work, and we have an excellent ambulance service, and it is just such a blessing that we do indeed have them.
I see in the bills we got a large purchase. Did we get our new ambulance?
Yes, it's supposed to be here next week.
Oh, it's next week.
All right.
We won't give them the payment until it's here.
All right, and we'll talk about that during approval of, of bills. All right, so I believe I have approval of proclamation in item six, or item, yeah, item six, and I can sign it, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Need a vote, don't we?
We did, we voted. That's what I thought. It's approved, item six, that proclamation is approved, and I will indeed sign it. And now we will move on to item number seven. Uh, pond number one, cleaning request. Um, Chris Powell is here. Do you want to address that with us, Mr. Powell? Appreciate your attending tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, thank you for approving the proclamations.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for your service and all your guys.
Thank you. Well, uh, tonight on the agenda, wanted to get your approval for moving forward with a budget amendment for pond cleaning. You all had a chance to read my email in reference to that. Um, our plan, initial plan was to clean that later on this year anyway. We were gonna move forward, but we'd like to move forward a little sooner so we can get it on schedule a little faster with the cleaning company. Um, a few weeks ago, we had a airline issue out there that we had to do a repair where we had to actually drain the pond. And, uh, we found out that it is in dire need of cleaning now. The sludge is getting to be, oh, between 18 and 24 inches, which is getting up to where our air diffusers are. So it's starting to affect the treatment of the pond, so. Our goal was to have the headworks done so the pretreatment could remove, um, a lot of the, um, organics and solids and, and waste going in there prior to, you know, after this is done, but that's not working out right now, so. With your blessing, we'd like to move forward with getting a contract together on this. Um, cost right now are approximately 300,000. Um, I did get an updated cost from one of our potential contractors. Uh, they're estimating, um, about 278,000, um, but I, I still think we may be at that 300,000 mark by the time they get done, from prior experience.
And, and just to be clear tonight, Chris, you're just requesting council's approval to move forward with this? Because it's my understanding that needs to happen first, that we approve the moving forward, and then later, uh, council would have to entertain a resolution to amend the budget, right?
Yeah.
Moving it to this fiscal year.
Yes, we, because we, we're putting in the budget anyway this year. We were gonna put it, but we'd like to move forward faster to spend that money and get a contract set up now with, with a company to do it, so. Um, a lot of times they're three, four months out on scheduling, so we wanted to get move, move forward a little faster with that schedule with them. So sometimes, uh, our hopes is, if you approve it, is to have this done by September, but it, it could still be delayed longer.
So if we move now, probably the earliest is September, right?
Yeah, that's what it was sounding like when I spoke with one of the contractors. We have two in mind. I have not got a second quote from the other company yet.
And the old saying, a picture's worth a thousand words?
Yes.
You have provided myself and council with a series of pictures indicating the dire need to clean that, right?
Yes, yep, those pictures, if you're able to see those, or I think you got them in the packet there, correct?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, that, when we did that air diffuser repair, we done one a few years ago. We had a contract that was doing some sludge work down there and had damaged one. And when we repaired that one, we could access that diffuser. This time, we could barely get in there. We, we actually had to do the work under the sludge. The crew did, so I, it's in dire need, the, the sludge and everything's starting to compact around where the air diffusers are. So it's, it's limiting the treatment. Um, we're seeing some effects with a little bit of, uh, pressure in our blowers, so it, it's making some effects, and we're not getting as good a treatment.
So is this pond not being used then?
No, this is our, our, uh, our, one of our main, our main number one aerated lagoon.
But you've got it drained, so you're not?
So we would, uh, yes, we would drain that cell, and then we buy, then we would switch over to our second cell as our primary during the cleaning process. So we would only have two cells in, in, uh, available aerated cells during the cleaning process. And this is a normal thing. This, this has happened for many years. So it's our normal process. We have to bypass one to clean the other.
You, you're just asking to move it into this fiscal year?
Yes.
And you'd plan to do it anyway.
Well, if it sounds like it's not gonna be till September, it'll be next fiscal year.
Yeah, we, but we want to be able to have, get a contract signed, you know, being able to, as soon as possible.
Now, with it being drained, is it, it waits till September to somebody come in and clean it? Is that gonna make it harder to clean or easier to clean?
Well, we, we won't drain it until they're on site.
Okay.
Yep. Then, then we'll, then, we will drain most of the liquid out of, over to another cell, and then the contractor will set up their equipment and, and wash out the sludge. Unfortunately, all of our, if you could see in the drawings, all of our aeration equipment is in the bottom of the lagoon, and it cannot be removed during the cleaning process, which affects the cost of this. So eventually, you know, this is an older system, put it in the early 90s. One of these days, it's gonna have to be replaced. You know, one of these days, we're gonna have to go to a different style aeration system for treatment. You know, we'll be coming to that down the road here, but for now, we have to deal with what we have. And, uh, and that's cleaning it with all that equipment in there. A lot of the newer stuff, they're able to remove the, the aeration equipment and do a, a little bit different type of cleaning method. Uh, what makes it a lot quicker and easier. And then some of the, the newer aerated lagoons are actually tapered. They're sloped to one side or another, or to a, uh, draining pipe, where it's easier for the contractor to clean them. Ours is flat, so they have to wash each section to a pump until it's cleaned. So it's, it's a time-consuming process.
And, and that's 30 years old technology. That was state-of-the-art 30 years ago, right?
And they clean all that sludge out there, what do they do with it?
So the sludge will be removed, um, it'll be, uh, processed into, uh, tankers, and then it will be taken out and land-applied. Uh, it'll be injected into the ground for a land application.
So were you the photographer or the one wearing the waders in the picture?
I was the photographer on this one. I have wore the waders, though.
That indicates that, that picture of, of the waders, how deep that sludge was.
Yes, that's why I took the.
Boots.
Yes. And you'll probably see that we did purchase some new waders, because the other ones had holes in them, so.
Not a good thing.
Well, God bless you guys for your work.
Yes, oh, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Strecker, did you need to mention anything to us? Okay.
We'll adjust the budget when the bill comes in, but, um, we just need to approve moving forward with the contract.
Okay, Councilman Victorin, I think, has a question for somebody.
That, that basically was what, what is, aside from the contract, what is the actual request here? Is it to amend the budget?
Just to get an approval to seek a contract, isn't it?
That's my understanding. There, request council's approval to seek a contract to do the pond, pond number one cleaning. Later, I think probably next council meeting, there will be a resolution to amend the budget.
But the monies are.
The, the normal budget process will be submitted. We, I think we've already submitted through that, didn't we?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
The monies are in the enterprise fund for the
Yes.
sanitation.
Little bit complicated, but not a whole lot, right? So, gentlemen, do you have any further questions for Mr. Powell or Mrs. Strecker, or anybody? Thank you, Chris.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we are in item number seven, uh, pond number one cleaning request. I would entertain a motion to approve, uh, water wastewater going forward to seek a contract to do pond number one cleaning request.
Mr. Mayor, I would make that motion.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal in item number seven to allow water wastewater to move forward with, to seek a contract for pond number one cleaning. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, item number seven, all those in favor of approving going forward with the pond number one cleaning request, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, uh, that approval to move forward on that pond number one in item seven is approved. All right, item eight. And this is the amended portion of the agenda this evening, and I'm gonna read what it was amended to. So, uh, addendum number three to the agreement for professional services with MC Shaft and Associates. Associates Staff recommends approval of addendum number three to the agreement for professional services with MC Shaft and Associates in the not-to-exceed amount of 135,015 dollars for engineering services with material testing costs estimated to be 13,717 dollars during the design phase and 8,880 dollars during the inspection phase for a total cost of 157,612 dollars. And I would call on Director of Public Works, Harkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Addendum number three is for the design, bidding, construction, oversight, and closeout services for the Torrington Airport Apron and Taxway C rehabilitation project. This project is a mill and overlay of the existing asphalt areas on the general aviation apron and taxiway C pavements. It will also include new aircraft tie-downs and pavement markings. And a sketch of the areas is provided in your packet on a map. As part of FAA's requirement, we had to perform an independent fee estimate that was performed by Kirkham Michael out of Lincoln, Nebraska. Uh, that IFE was then sent to FAA to, uh, get their approval. After we negotiated with MC Shaft for a final price, FAA responded on April 16th with their concurrence awarding the engineering services in the amount of 157,612 dollars. As you can see on the memo that I attached, the breakdown of the project cost funding is 97.5% reimbursable. Uh, FAA will contribute 95% of the cost. YDOT will contribute 2.5% of the cost. And the city will contribute the remaining 2.5% of the cost, which is just a little under $4,000 for the engineering's part of it. The current construction project estimate is about 1.4 million dollars for this project, which is also 97.5% reimbursable. So, the city's share of that would be approximately $35,000 of a $1.4 million contract. Funds are gonna be requested, obviously, in the fiscal year '26 budget. The proposed schedule is project bidding will probably take place this June 2025. Construction probably won't take place until spring of 2026, and final acceptance would be somewhere in the summer, fall of 2026. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
These are the ones that I can't help but like, because the FFA is paying the lion's share of this.
Correct.
Along with YDOT, they're, those two together are paying 97.5%, right, of what we're doing tonight.
Correct.
The city's share is $3,940.30. This is just how the airport system works with FFA and YDOT, right?
It's been that way for quite a while. The percentages change every now and again, although lately, this percentage has changed more into our favor. I don't know how long that will last, it may go back to the 90, 97 and a half, or was it 95 and five, something like that, I think, before? Excuse me.
And, Mr. Harkins, there's also the FBO construction that's gonna be taking place, and there's, I know you certainly are trying to coordinate that, so it gets done in the correct stages and it doesn't interfere. The FBO project doesn't interfere with this paving project, right?
Correct. We just received the 95% plans from MC Shaft today. We will review those and probably have a meeting with FAA and YDOT, and if everything's good to go with those plans, those could be advertised sometime later this month, and then, obviously, the construction would take place, hopefully, starting this late spring, early summer.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Harkins? All right, seeing none, that's amended. Item number eight, the way we did amend it, I would entertain a motion to approve addendum number three to the agreement for professional services with MC Shaft as indicated in amended item eight.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the staff recommendation as presented.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve staff recommended amendment number three to the agreement for professional services with MC Shaft and Associates set forth in item, amended item eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in, it's amended item number eight, all those in favor of approval of amended number, amend, excuse me, addendum number three, do the agreement for professional services with MC Shaft signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that is approved, item number eight, amended item number eight. All right, we are on item number nine, ordinance on second reading relating to the City of Torrington Employee Compensation Management Process, and Mr. Eddington, would you please read that ordinance by title?
An ordinance amending and reenacting chapter 2.38 of the Torrington Municipal Code, 2025 revisions relating to the City of Torrington Employee Compensation Management Process.
Thank you, Mr. Eddington. All right, this is, this ordinance on second reading. Mrs. Strecker, any comments?
There's been no changes, basically, this is just cleaning up some language, some old language in the ordinances, referring back to a 2010 personnel study, so...
And we approved this ordinance on first reading, I think, April 15th of this year. All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions for either Mr. Eddington or Mrs. Strecker on item number nine on the agenda? Seeing none, item number nine, ordinance on second reading, as presented, all those in favor of approving this ordinance on second reading signify by...
How about a motion, sir?
A motion, first.
I'm sorry. All right, I would entertain a motion in item number nine.
Mr. Mayor, I would make the motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance relating to code revisions for city employee compensation.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Deal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Now, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, item number nine, all those in favor of approving this ordinance on second reading as presented in item nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that ordinance is approved on second reading. All right, we are now on item number 10, approval of the bills from April 16th, 2025 to May 6th, 2025, and I would call on Mrs. Strecker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so we have two sets of bills, one attached to your agenda, and then one that I handed out tonight. It's been three weeks since our last approval of bills, so we have quite a list, and quite an amount to approve.
Just so this is clear, on the handout set, Mrs. Strecker?
Yes.
All these lists of payments to Northland Cable, that's for fiber network, and just, what is that, I guess, tell me what that is?
That is for Vive.
Vive?
Yes, we have internet, direct fiber connections that we pay directly, and they're split out between departments, so that's what those are.
And Northland Cable is just a parent of Vive?
Yeah, that's the name they put on their W and I, and so that's how we have to make the checks payable to. Sometimes they're not the same as they're doing business as name that we know, but...
On the first one, it's on page six for LoFink Panhandle Lawn Care, all the weed control spraying, that's $10,600, was that a estimated figure, or was that just? What's that?
So it's actual spraying?
Is this some chemical, something, do they have a licensed applicator or something? Do they have to have a licensed applicator to do this?
Yes.
I just don't even remember seeing that big an amount anywhere before.
LoFink, is that what you said, Councilman?
Yeah.
He does all our ball fields, all our learning tracks, some areas around the ball field, all the interior sports complex. He sprays it once, which gets it really well, we spray it five or six times during the year, so we'll have to do it maybe a second time at the end of the year, maybe with State Department coming, just to keep up with it, we just don't have the staff to do it.
They also spray other areas, including our substations.
Water department's...
Water department wells, so...
And I think the last figure I had from Mr. Estes was parks and sports fields are 30 acres?
Correct.
In this city? So, that 30 acres isn't including what you just described, parks, or the water department and everywhere else that needs to be sprayed, right?
Right.
30 acres doesn't include what he's spraying, that's the outside areas off the track.
This is for bare ground control, correct?
Yes, this is for...
I must say, I do this at my place of work, myself, it's tedious work, it's time-consuming, it's dangerous.
With the chemicals?
With the chemical, yep.
We have to be very careful of liability as well, so, these are public areas, most of them.
On page eight, it has Panhandle Concrete, some of that's manholes, those are not the ones that are in dispute at the headworks, were they? Okay.
Yep.
Then on the second set up, on page six, under Paddle and Enterprises, first thing in the line, VA 12-volt front kit, $10,731, what would that be?
It's an aerator that we purchased, and we will get reimbursed from the rec board on that, I believe, Dennis, is that the rec board purchase?
It's a piece of equipment that goes on the front of a bed track, it's an aerator that wobbles as it goes through the ground, and it's a seeder. We used it at the golf course yesterday, I used it in the parks today, a great piece of equipment, one person operating, hook up to it, go, and it just takes off, save it, Dave Damp wants one, that's how good a piece of equipment it is.
Oh, no.
Was that something that one that does like punches holes and...
It punches the holes, but it doesn't pull the cord, but it doesn't just roll, it wobbles as it goes, and kind of opens it up, and drops seed if you want to seed it at the same time. I did a bunch of areas in the parks, Dave did a bunch of his colors and greens, around his greens yesterday.
And I think Mrs. Strecker's point was, will we be reimbursed for this cost through the rec board?
I put it for a grant through the rec board, yes, sir, they thought that.
If there are more questions on the bills, I'd make a motion to pay them as presented.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Kelly, item number 10, to approve the bills as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, item 10, all those in favor of approval of the bills that's set forth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, those bills are approved in item 10. Next item on the agenda is public comment time, and I see Fire Chief Luis Correa back there. Chief, could you give us a fire report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, we've been fairly busy, starting to get quite a few grass fires, it's pretty dry out there, and people still need to burn some weeds that have been gathering up all winter time. Yeah, that's, we had a motor vehicle accident that we assisted on, carbon monoxide, call out a local business, but, other than that, we're just getting ready for a fire convention that will be next month, just trying to get ready for that and keep up to date on our training.
Can you give us the dates for the state fire convention that's here in Torrington?
Good question.
June 12th, I think?
June, yeah, I believe that's right, it's...
It says Friday? Four days, what date does it start, Dennis?
Yeah, it's... Yeah, I got down the 12th, 13th, and 14th is, is one...
And this is the state convention?
Yep, this is the state convention for the Wyoming State Firemen's Association.
And when's the last time it was, that state convention's been held in Torrington?
Oh, I'd have to...
17 years ago.
17, 17 years ago, yeah, we had gotten out of it for a while, and I think about four years ago, we started back in it, and we were lucky enough to put our name in for hosting the convention and got it, so...
Okay, so that should bring lots of folks to town?
It should be, I believe last time I heard, it'll be eight teams that we have coming, two of them which will be ours, but five, five guys and families on each team, so...
So you must have some younger members that are willing to do the competition?
We got a mixture of old and, old and new guys, yeah, we've, we've talked some of our younger, newer members into it, and I think Albert Lear is probably our most senior, senior competitor for our teams anyways, he's been doing it for quite a while.
Good, and these conventions are good, because they get you guys together, you have conversations, you can develop skills, practice those skills, compete, all those things, right?
Yeah, yeah, we have our meeting for the state, and just a good time to get people together and have a good time, and some laughs, and just, it's a good, good building for, for the fire service as a state.
And I appreciate that, I appreciate you guys that did the work to put that together, so we'd have the convention here, I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's been fun, it's, we got a, our drill team has put in the, the most amount of work for that, but, yeah, they, they make it easy on me anyways, as well as Dennis, Dennis has put in a lot of time and work, our streets and sanitation, it's, they got the drill field looking pretty nice, so we appreciate the streets and sanitation, Dennis Estes and his crew for all they've done.
Did you say there were only eight teams?
Yeah, eight teams total, but I believe last time I, last time I knew, I think Torrington will have two, Afton will have two, Newcastle, Wheatland...
Riverton and Lander.
Riverton and Lander, yep, those are, it, it was a little scary, earlier this year, it looked like it was gonna be Torrington and Afton, so, they've, the other state, the other teams have definitely pulled together, and hopefully, it'll be a memorable one, and it'll be good to have it back in Torrington.
Gentlemen, do you have any further questions for Chief Correa?
How many, how many times has Torrington brought home the bacon, so to speak?
It's been a while, I think in our, in our trophy things, I think there's trophies dating back to the 1920s, so, there's, it's, it's pretty impressive how many trophies we actually do have in that, in that room, so...
All right, thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I know, I spoke to Matt Johnson, Chief of Police, and he wanted to speak at public comment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this past Sunday, May 4th, was International Firefighter Appreciation Day. Our partners in the fire service frankly get cheated, because they get one day out of the whole year, and all of our other first responders... Our partners in the fire service frankly get cheated because they get one day out of the whole year and all of our other first responders get a whole week. And frankly, they deserve our appreciation every day, not just one. And we're so fortunate in our community, in our county, to have volunteer firefighters who provide amazing professional service. And I just wanted to take a minute to recognize Chief Correa and his staff and all the other volunteer firefighters who deserve our respect, appreciation, and gratitude. So, thank you.
I appreciate that, Chief. Did you have a question, Councilman Kelly? And I just wanted to note that not only do the firemen protect us, save us, all the things that they do, but a lot of people don't realize that if you have you have to have a quality fire department in order to keep in household house insurance rates down. A lot of people don't realize that your insurance rates are based on what the quality of your fire local fire department is. And if it doesn't, if the fire department doesn't meet a certain standard, your insurance rates will go up. So I don't think a lot of people are aware of that, that that's connected.
That merits water service too, so the folks in the water department that, you know, provide the fire protection through water, that helps a lot with that ISO rate.
Yeah, and there's an actual term, ISO rate, right? Okay, so it's important right there for that to keep the the cost of your house insurance down. All right, we're in public comment time. We've had two takers. Any other takers?
Mayor, might I speak about the pool like that?
Yes, sir.
So just to give you an update, the pool is finished. Mike's got everything pretty much working. They've been working on the heater for the last two days. I don't know if he got it going late tonight or not. He's having some issues. Same issues that we have with it every year. It's some kind of sensor in the heater that's not working correct. So I'm sure those folks will get that fixed, but it doesn't look like there's going to be any snafus and we should be able to open on Memorial Day.
That is amazing.
For what they did all winter long in that wind, yeah, yeah, they they really worked really well with us and come in on bid and I'm really pleased with them.
And you know, you never know the quality of the contractors that you have. We had never, as far as I know, the city had never undertaken a contract like this.
Correct.
And we took a risk and did it, and it's panned out. That guy, they're from somewhere down in Colorado.
They're from Golden, yeah. They come in and plastered it in one day last week in about four and a half hours, did the final plaster on it. We had a little snafu and it got filled.
How many people?
There were probably forty people over there trolling trolling out that plaster.
That company just seems amazingly well organized and knowledgeable and just did a bang up job for us on that swimming pool.
They sent me a really nice video of the before and after, so I'll get that to you so you guys can see it.
Well, thank you for that update. All right. We've had three. Going once, going twice. You're welcome up here, Mr. Peterson. All right. All right, well, there are no further takers for public comment. I would now entertain a motion to leave regular session and go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to enter executive session for the purposes of potential litigation.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to move into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Warren. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, hearing none, I'll call for vote. Item twelve, all those in favor of entering into leaving regular session entering into executive session to discuss potential litigation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, we are now in executive session.